Okay, is everyone ready? Good evening. Welcome to the Lompoc City Council Meeting. This is Tuesday, December 19th, 2017. It is 6:30 PM. If I could remind everyone, if they haven't done so already, to silence their cellphones, pagers if you still have one. We are returning from a closed session that we started at 5 o'clock this afternoon. And it's just City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. There were three items on the agenda for closed session. All were discussed, but there was no report of election.
Okay, thank you. Now, if you'll rise and join Pastor Darren Hunt in the inf- uh, yeah, in the infidication.
Let's pray. Dear God, here we stand at the close of this year. God, looking to the future and to the next year, we are thankful for your many blessings throughout this year, and we're thankful for your grace, your mercy, your provision and strength that has carried us through struggles we may have faced this year as well. God, we think most recently about those from our community impacted by the Thomas Fire. Firefighters, first responders, those from CERT and Red Cross, those who assisted evacuees, and those who have sat with people who have lost nearly every material possession they owned. God, help those in Ventura and Santa Barbara County recover, not just physically, but emotionally and spiritually as well. God, we pray also for the family of Corey Iverson, firefighter from San Diego who gave his life fighting this fire. God, encourage his young family and surround them with your comfort and peace during the difficult weeks and months ahead. God, keep our firefighters safe, keep everyone safe as this fire is, uh, God quickly extinguished, and bless our dear fire department, we pray as well. Tonight, we also pray for our police department as we welcome five new Lompoc police officers, and we want to pray for them. God, we pray for Kayla Cavalletto, Stan Duncan, Alex Justice, Stefan Peña, and Edwin Ruiz. Thank you for these brave individuals who have signed on to serve and protect this city. God, we pray that you would protect them from harm and fill them with your wisdom as they perform the duties of their calling with courage and respect. God, help them to uphold justice within our city and serve to better the culture of their department. Help them to acclimate quickly and grow in their knowledge and skills. Finally tonight, God, we pray for our city council. We thank you for our mayor and city council members, as well as all our city staff that pour their lives into bettering our community. We pray for your wisdom and help as they meet to do the work of governing this city. Strengthen them to be the leaders this city needs, and bless our community, we pray. God, we remember the under-resourced during this Christmas season. For you to, God, we pray for you to fill their hearts with blessings no material gift could. And God, thank you. Thank you for Lompoc. Thank you for Christmas. Bless now, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, we have a couple of presentations today, and we're gonna go a little bit out of order, so don't try and follow them on your, um, agenda. We're gonna start with a proclamation for Community Action Commission. So we have a new executive director for our Santa Barbara Community Action Committee Commission. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is a proclamation honoring the Community Action Commission for their 50 years of community service. Whereas, the Community Action Commission of Santa Barbara County was incorporated in 1967 to provide a safe net, a safety net, to low-income members of our community and to provide comprehensive services countywide that create a path for individuals and families to move from poverty to stability. And whereas, annual community needs assessments have been used to create strategic plans for addressing the underserved needs as identified by the community members themselves. And the organizations has been, and the organization has been governed by a board of directors comprised of representatives from low-income communities, public and private partners, as well as local elected officials. And whereas, Community Action Commission of Santa Barbara County, also known as CAC, provides quality education and health programs to individuals age five and under so they can adequately be prepared to enter kindergarten, and offers family services that change the course of, of the vulnerability of at-risk teens and young adults, helping them to acquire critical life skills, education success, and vocational training. Whereas, nutrition services provided, provided by healthy meals and a companionship to low-income seniors, as well as meals to children and teens within their various program services. And CAC also provides economic support by offering winter weatherization services and utility bill assistance. And whereas, a low-income, and whereas, low-income members of the Lompoc community are better able to move from poverty into economic vi- viability, vibrant, vibrancy, because of the partnership CAC is able to create through the collaborations with various human services and the programs within the region, and to leverage federal, state, and private funding for meeting low-income needs. Now therefore, I, Bob Lingel, by authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Lompoc, congratulate the Community Action Commission of Santa Barbara County on its 50 years of service to our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. (applause) Thank you, Mayor Lingel and council members. I want to thank you for recognizing the Community Action Commission's 50 years of service to the community. As you may be aware, the CAC has a long, rich history of getting things done in this community. For instance, last year, 26 low-income homes were weatherized at no cost, making them safer and more efficient, energy-efficient. This included the replacement of unsafe appliances. Another 71 households received assistance paying their utility bills totaling over $100,000. Of course, ensuring families have electricity and heat helps them to contribute to a family's overall stability and well-being. When families are stable, they can maintain their jobs, support their childhood education at school, and contribute to the community. Last year, we provided nearly 5,000 teens, youth and teens with life skills and personable responsibility training, counseling, and family support services through the youth programs within the CAC. But that's just the beginning of the story. Since 2014, we have also operated the 211 Call Center for Santa Barbara County, and on average, we handle about 400 calls every month for Lompoc residents who need information on how to access their local health services and human services. Many of these calls come from residents, Lompoc residents, who are in crisis, maybe dealing with mental health issues within the family or domestic violence issues, and we're there to help steer them in the right direction for the resources they need to resolve their, their own family issues. The CAC's nutrition services makes it possible for 58 Lompoc senior citizens to enjoy healthy, nutritious lunches at the Dewey Center, and in addition, we provide home-delivered meals for those who can't get to the congregant meal sites. Often, that helps them to maintain their independence in their own homes and avoid expensive, long-term care facilities. But in general, helping people to help themselves doesn't stop with just having a full tummy. The CAC also nurtures the mind and the spirit of Lompoc's youngest and most vulnerable residents. We provide early education and childcare services for over 220 children each year in home settings and childcare centers through the Early Head Start and Head Start programs, ensuring they're prepared with the math, reading, and social skills needed to be successful when they enter kindergarten. We also promote and track their health and well-being with medical, free dental, medical, and vision screenings. But there's even more. While their children are gaining the skills they need to become successful young students, their parents are working with our family advocates to get linked up with the right education and job skills training they need to find jobs at livable wages. I've been very impressed in the last six weeks since I started with the CAC with the number of staff that the CAC employs who are actually Head Start parents or students themselves in the Head Start program. With the CAC's support and nurturing, we've been able to help get them the education and training that they need to become teachers assistants, teachers, even program managers. We've also had the pleasure of having a couple of young men come through our Youth Corps program and who are now working with our weatherization programs. So we're really talking about supporting the, the family network so that they can get the, the services they need to stabilize their family and become successful contributing citizens in the community. These are our true success stories. And as the new executive director of the Community Action Commission of Santa Barbara County, I want to ensure you that we're gonna continue this mission. And I'm going to be looking for opportunities to collaborate with existing resources and organizations to avoid duplication of services and leverage the resources that we have in the community to become more efficient, efficient and effective. That's our mission, is to work in the community in partnership with the community and those organizations already in existence to help support our families and move them from poverty to self-sufficiency. With, with that in mind, we look forward to serving this community for another 50 years. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much.[852.13][852.13](applause) Okay, now we're gonna have a presentation from Fire Services on the Fill the Boot Campaign.
Mayor, council, and members of the community, my name is Cody Lee. And tonight, I'm here representing the Lompoc Firefighters Local 1906. I'm just gonna give a short presentation on a fundraiser that we did December 2nd and 3rd. It's called Fill the Boot. It's done all over California, and it's a fundraiser for the Muscular Dystrophy Association. What we do is, we stand out on the street corners and we have our fire boots, and as people go by, they're able to give donations. And the Lompoc community, I was told, is, this year was the second highest grossing in all of Southern California for a single location, and the highest grossing for all of Santa Barbara County. Super, yeah, very good.[935.81][935.81](applause) We've been doing this event here in town for a number of years, and I'm gonna try and come every year, and the reason I'm up here is just to say thank you. I think it's a true testament to how generous the Lompoc community is, and what a great opportunity it is to give back. And as you can see, there's a gentleman up there, his name is Dane. He's directly benefited from the money that has been raised. They keep the money local, which is very important, so it's important for people to know that when they are donating, that money is gonna stay for people who are local. Just some people who are involved really quick. As far as fire departments, we had Vandenberg, which plays a huge role in this. We also had Lompoc City, of course, Guadalupe, and Carpenteria. And then we also reach out to the college. We have a very, we have an amazing training facility up at Allen Hancock College, and so we reach out to the cadets up there, and we had EMS cadets, fire cadets, and police cadets all volunteer their time to come down here and participate in this event. I'd also like to thank the council, and especially the fire, fire chief and police chief for their support. And last but not least, again, thanks to the community. This event would not be possible without everybody, and hopefully we can just keep this thing going. I think it's a great deal.
Tell them about the amounts?
Oh, yeah, the amounts. So sorry. Day one, pretty incredible, $15,008, and that is not including the change. I carried at least two bags of change that were over 50 pounds each the first day, and this is the second day, the total without change. Again, they had just as much change the second day, but as you can see, $23,844 is, is pretty incredible for two days. That's between the hours of 8:30 and 4 o'clock in the afternoon, so.[1077.83][1077.83](applause)
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the, everything you guys do. Okay, now we are going to have Lompoc Police Chief Pat Walsh introduce our city's newest police officers.
Thank you, Mayor, council, everybody that's here, everybody that's watching at home. As you know, I like to introduce our police officers. I think it's very important that the community know who is serving them, and I could not be any prouder of this group of recruits. Quite frankly, if I was their age, I couldn't compete against them. I'm not making that up. So when I call your name, and don't let that go to your head, you're still on training.[1120.51][1120.51](laughter) Uh, when I call you up, if you can come up here and, and, and stand. So the first person I want to introduce is Alex Justice, a name made for police work, actually. Uh, come on up, Alex.[1134.21][1134.21](applause) Alex has worked in law enforcement for four years. He worked patrol and custody. In 2014, he graduated from Allen Hancock College, Public Safety, and then he went to Santa Barbara County Sheriff where he was a custody deputy, and he was the valedictorian and class sergeant of that academy in 2015. Alex is married and has his, has three children. Are they here, Alex?
Yes.
Okay, would you like to introduce your family?
Yes, please. So, I'd like to thank my, my wife, my wife's pretty.[1174.33][1174.33](applause) I have three children, I have two daughters, Ari and Amilis, and my newborn son, Ager.
All right, all right.[1186.15][1186.15](applause)
And then my father and my mother, Larry, my stepmother, her mother-in-law.[1196.21][1196.21](applause)
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna, that's okay. I'm getting in trouble from the city clerk.[1215.01][1215.01](laughter) Uh, the next one is Officer Kayla Cavalletto.[1219.01][1219.01](applause) Officer Cavalletto was raised on a ranch in Paso Robles, California, is the youngest of five children. After graduating high school, she moved to Pullman, Washington, where she earned a Bachelor of Science degree in kinesiology. Officer Cavalletto was sponsored by the Lompoc Police Department and attended the Allen Hancock College Law Enforcement Academy in the summer of 2017. She graduated with Class 313 and is proud to be part of the Lompoc community and police department. Uh, I would just add, Officer Cavalletto is the third female police officer I have hired since I've been here. I've had the privilege to hire, and I've had to explain to Captain Clement that the locker room is no longer hers, 'cause it was just her. So she's had to move out of some of the lockers, I'm kidding. So, it is true, isn't it? So, and your family's not here, 'cause you're working tonight, so anyways, she has a great support group, I'm happy to have you.[1284.33][1284.33](applause)
So Chief, with Officer Cavalletto, her degree in kinesiology, she's gonna get your, the rest of your force in good shape now?
Well, you know, we have, we have 10 people on injured list right now.
That's what I mean, yeah.
So she might get pressed into work, yes.[1304.15][1304.15](laughter) Okay, next, Officer Stan Duncan.[1307.71][1307.71](applause) Officer Duncan was born and raised in Bakersfield, California. After graduating from high school, he attended several colleges where he earned an Associate of Arts degree in liberal arts, an Associate of Applied Science and Graphic Design, and a Bachelor of Science degree in advanced web technology, or development, rather. After almost 10 years of career in web development, Officer Duncan sponsored himself through the Allen Hancock Law Enforcement Academy and was hired shortly before graduation by the Lompoc Police Department. And I will say about Officer Duncan, he's, how long you been in patrol? A week?
One week.
One week, and I think he's already chased two people down and put handcuffs on them, so good.
All right.[1356.92][1356.92](laughter)[1357.92][1357.92](applause)
So he's, he's working as well, so his family's not here tonight. Uh, the next one is Officer Stephen Peña.[1370.01][1370.01](applause) Officer Peña was born and raised in Santa Barbara. He graduated from Santa Barbara High School and later attended Santa Barbara City College where he received an Associate's Degree in Administration of Justice and Legal Studies. In 2017, he was sponsored by Lompoc Police Department, attended Allen Hancock Police Academy. He was sworn in at the graduation, and in his free time, he likes to spend time with his family and work out, who knew?[1403.01][1403.01](laughter) Would you like to introduce your, your family? Okay, here you go. I'm gonna give this to you so we don't get in trouble.
All right, I have my fantastic supporters here, my, my father, Ruben Peña, my mom, Teresa Peña, and my girlfriend, Roxanne Bourbon, and I'm just thankful for this opportunity, and, um, thank you.
Okay, Edwin Ruiz, Officer Edwin Ruiz.[1431.01][1431.01](applause) Edwin and Stefan are, are best friends. I, I think they're gonna earn the nickname of the Bash Brothers, they're, just, just comes to mind. Officer Ruiz was born and raised in Santa Barbara, California. After graduating high school in 2011, he attended Santa Barbara City College. 2017, he was hired by the Lompoc Police Department and attended Allen Hancock Academy. Officer Ruiz is proud to offer his fluency in Spanish language and is honored to serve the city of Lompoc.[1468.51][1468.51](applause)
I just wanted to thank my family for supporting me through the academy and to the continued support through my law enforcement career, my mom and dad, and my grandma in the back, and my uncles and cousins in the front, and thank you for this opportunity from the city of Lompoc.
All right, thank you.[1491.65][1491.65](applause) One of the things I forgot to say is that Officer Ruiz was, he earned the, the Layinghorn Memorial Award for Most Improved at the Police Academy, this last academy, so good job on that. So what I'd like to say is, I'm proud of these young officers for joining the Lompoc Police Department, and not only just Lompoc Police Department, but law enforcement in general. These are trying times in, in our country, and especially in law enforcement, and I'm just very proud that you chose this profession, and I'm, I'm very excited that you chose the Lompoc Police Department, and we are in good hands in Lompoc with, with this quality of candidates. So thank you for letting me introduce them.[1537.83][1537.83](applause)
City Manager's Report. Yes, I'm sorry.[1554.51][1554.51](laughter) I went, okay. Presentation of the Audit Police Department.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Pat Walsh from the Police Department. One of the things that I noticed when I came here three years ago was, we were a little behind in the way we, we looked at our force. We, we investigated force if it was, rose to a certain level, but the very changing dynamics in law enforcement world, we needed to get into the 21st century on the way we looked at force. So I asked the Office of Independent Review, these are two of the most well sought-out and extremely good attorneys in the country. Matter of fact, they've been all over the country. They are law enforcement accountability attorneys, I'm probably saying that wrong, and they'll introduce themselves better than I will. But I work with them in Portland, and just to let the council know that this, the money we paid, the Office of Independent Review, came from our insurance carrier, 'cause, and so it didn't cost us any money. Anything that lowers your liability, you can use a, a fund from our insurance carrier. So they were paid for out of that fund, but they came and looked at the way we use force, the way we discipline, and just looked at the, the high-risk policies, and it's made some recommendations, and they're gonna talk about their recommendations, and then if you have any questions over them or myself, I could tell you what I'm doing with the recommendations. So I'll let them further introduce themselves. And I'm sorry, Mike Ginaco and Julie Ruland.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Mayor, city council members, members of the Lompoc community, my name is Michael Ginaco, and it's my privilege to be before you this evening. We actually made it all the way up with, out of any problem with the fires down south, and we're appreciative of that. As the chief indicated, we were, we had a relationship with the chief when he was up in Portland, and for years, we have reviewed significant uses of force by the Portland Police Bureau in Oregon as part of our coterie of responsibilities. When Chief Walsh came down here, we ended up having a conversation with him, and as, after he was installed as chief, he began to recognize that perhaps an audit of their police practices in this city might be helpful. And I think the best part of what the chief was able to do was to get your insurance company to pay for it. That is a growing practice. I think insurance companies recognize that having outside independent auditors come in every once in a while and take a look at police practices can only help with regard to potential risk management, and can only help to ensure that the city and, and the department is insulated from liability by, in fact, populating or improving the situation by improving practices, improving policies, and, and, and so on. And that's what we did. So this past year, we looked at the current policies, practices, and protocols of the Lompoc Police Department, and we also then took a look at the, at actual cases, because you can have anything in writing, but if it's not being enforced, or it's not really being implemented in practice, then the policies don't really matter. So we also took a sample of a number of uses of force, a number of internal investigations, and determined whether or not there could be improvement in the way in which the department reviews, investigates, force incident- reviews, investigates force incidents, reviews them, and tries to use the incidents in a way to get better. And that's what it's all about. So, what many traditional police agencies do is there's a force incident, it's found to be in policy, that report goes on the shelf or in a file cabinet, and then everyone moves on. What more progressive police agencies do, and part of our recommendations are intended to help Lompoc do this as well, is to, when there is an incident in which force was used, not only look at whether or not the force was in policy, but to see whether there are other things that could be learned from the incident. And then feed back that learning back to the individual officers who were involved, as well as the department as a whole. And that feedback loop is, is really important to do, but many agencies don't do that. And some of these recommendations are intended to do what already Chief Walsh was doing, which is to try to build that feedback loop into the organization. We also looked at specific uses of force policies and made improvements with regard to that. And I think at this point, what I'd like to do, and we're certainly here, we, we took the drive, and we're going to be here this evening, so if you have any questions, either during our presentation or after, we're here to answer anything that you might have. But I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Julie Ruland, to talk to you more specifically about some of the high-level recommendations, key recommendations coming out of this report. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, council members and mayor. Thank you, thank you for having us. We're happy to be here. And, and thank you to the chief for bringing us in. Again, my name is Julie Ruland, and as Mike said, we focused, we really focused on uses of force and misconduct allegations. We looked at every use of force over a three-year period, and the reports that had been written related to those uses of force. In that period, there weren't any officer-involved shootings that we reviewed, so these are all a lot of TASER uses and a lot of other sort of non-deadly force uses. We, when we look at use of force, we, we sort of come at it from the orientation of where the basic goal is to, to eliminate any uses of force that might be legally justifiable, that is, they might meet a constitutional standard. But if you look at the entire incident, you could say, that might have been avoided, had there been different tactics, had there been different practices, had the officers taken a different approach to the entire incident. And so, we sort of come at things from, from that angle. And in that respect, we reviewed forty-some uses of force over that three-year period, and did come up with a number of recommendations. First off about, you know, what kind of force is being reported. And so, we have some recommendations, and we, we've, we met with the chief and his, his team about, you know, changing the definition of what gets reported and what doesn't get reported. And then, second key piece of that is, is how do you go about investigating those uses of force? So, how do you gather enough information about each incident to make sure that the department learns what it needs to learn in order to make a fair assessment about, again, going back to that key question of, was this force necessary? And then the next step is, is how is it reviewed, and who's responsible for reviewing it? And, you know, some of the key questions there are, were there ways that the officer might have safely de-escalated the situation? You know, what was the threat that the officer was responding to? Was the force used, was the level of force used a reasonable response to that threat? And, and at some point, was there an opportunity to stop and reassess that threat and adjust the officer's response? We really come at it from a holistic approach, to look at the entire incident. As we said, the tactics, to look at whether there are training, training deficiencies that need to be addressed, whether, you know, a particular incident, whether that means for the individual officer or officers involved in an incident, or for the entire department. Like, this is something we need to train better, because this is something, this incident gives us a window into a bigger problem. You know, and, and then even all the way to the post, sort of what happens after the force incident. Is the, the suspect or the subject of the force given appropriate medical care, and those kind of questions? So, when we look at the incident, we look at it from that holistic way. And, and in many of the cases we looked at, again, going back to the investigation, it all sort of has to fit together. If you don't, haven't gathered enough information, you can't look, you can't answer all those questions. So, again, as Mike said, the theme of all this is, what can you learn as a department from each one of these incidents, and, and with the goal of sort of continuously making yourselves a better agency? And so, those are the kind of conversations we had with the chief and his team. We also make some very, we sort of got into the weeds on the specific policies and make some very specific recommendations about the language of those policies, having to do with the overall general use of force policy. And there's some language that we thought ought to be included in those policies, some specific recommendations about TASER use and foot pursuits, and, and those are all included in our report. And then another key area in our report is to talk about supervision, because that's something that we feel is very key, and sort of how are officers being, you know, who, this whole review process doesn't work if there aren't layers of management to review it. And so, I know it's a, it's a request that has come frequently from the police department to reinstate the rank of lieutenant and to have lieutenants, again, in this department. We've looked at a lot of police agencies, and there are always lieutenants. It's, it's something that's a glaring absence from this police department. We think that's a key rank. Sergeants, in our view, need to be out in the field supervising officers as they go about their jobs. That's a key function of a sergeant. But if a sergeant is, is having to act as sort of an overall watch commander for the entire shift, stuck in the station, stuck doing paperwork, they can't get out and do the work of the sergeant that we think is very important for sergeants to be doing, because they're doing the task that traditionally is done by a lieutenant. So, we write about that supervision piece in our report, and I just wanted to reiterate that here. I know budgets are tight, and that's, that's not within our purview, but just from our perspective, given the work we've done with other agencies, just wanted to emphasize that that is, in our view, a key, a key rank.
And that's the only one that would cost money of all of our twenty-two recommendations. I would, I would just add a couple final points, and then certainly available for questions. One is having to do with why we focused on force. You know, of the police, what do we give, in order for police officers to do their job, we have to give them two significant pieces of authority. One is the power to arrest individuals, which is a significant authority that ordinary people don't have. And then, two, the power to use force under the appropriate circumstances. And under the appropriate circumstances is what we're talking about. If the circumstances are not appropriate or questionable, then that raises the possibility that there will be increased potential for liability, that officers themselves may get hurt as a result of using force. And the third is that you may lose confidence in the community if, in fact, officers are using too much force and are not being sufficiently guided, counseled, and disciplined in the appropriate cases about their uses of force. And so, that's what these recommendations are intended to address and intended to accomplish. The second thing that I want to say, and I think it is a testament to this city and your leadership and your police department, and that is this. And I would say, nine out of ten cases in which we are called in to do a study, it's not because someone thought it was a good idea. It's usually following a very controversial event that's going to cost a city a whole lot of money. And that's when we unfortunately are brought in. It's after that event has occurred, or a series of events that have occurred. So, just as an example, up the street in Santa Maria, they had some very significant and controversial shootings, in one case where an officer shot another officer and killed him. And that's when we got called in. Down the street in Oxnard, they had an incusidy death that was controversial, and then they had an officer-involved shooting in which an innocent person, who wasn't a subject, ended up being shot and killed as a result of police activity. But that's when we got called into that assignment. That's not true in your city. In Lompoc, it wasn't anything bad or controversial or significant or concerning that caused Chief Walsh to get in touch with us and to bring us on board. It's because he has recognized that every city, every organization, every police agency is one bad situation or bad radio call from something happening like that. So, to the degree that a department can insulate itself and its city from that kind of situation, these kinds of audits are becoming the thing to do. And not every agency does it, but the progressive ones are starting to recognize that. I think it's a testament to your leadership, and the approval of your city manager, and your chief being able to get us on board, that I think will redound to the benefit of the department, to the officers who work there, and to the community as a whole. And so, I appreciate that we were able to do this work in this city. The final thing that I would say is that when we, after we did our review and came to do our site visit and started to meet with people other than Chief Walsh, other command staff, we were impressed immediately by the fact that they got it. There wasn't this resistance. There wasn't this hostility to change. In fact, they embraced this change, started thinking of new ways of doing things, and worked with our recommendations so that they could make it meaningful to Lompoc PD. And that's what they did. So, I think we are very optimistic and appreciative of the fact that after we did our work, Lompoc PD and its leadership started to do their work. And I think that leaves you all, as, as leaders of this, of this city, you should feel comforted that we're in a good place. And we thank you for your time and your patience and your listening and your support. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them at this point. But thank you.
Sure. I just, I guess more, well, it's a question, I guess. And I'm not sure I'm going to word this exactly, but I think you'll get the direction I'm going. In my opinion, there is sort of a fine line between a use of force and the personal safety of the officer. Can you go into that a little bit?
Absolutely. And, and your, your point is very well taken. So, the whole idea of de-escalation, of problem-solving, of trying to take time to get back up, to get support there, is all an attempt to avoid the use of force. Not only for the purposes of not having to cause unnecessary injury to the subject, but to the officers themselves. Because one of the things that happens is when there is a use of force, there are officer safety issues and injury issues that do occur. When you take down a subject, or are forced to take down a subject, that creates not only the possibility of injury to the subject, but to yourself as well. And the many times in which an officer ends up going injured on duty as a result of that tussle. So, what we try to do is, is to teach officer safety principles. Time is on your side, distance is on your side, communication may be helpful, but don't put yourself in a situation where then you have to use force. And so, that's really very consistent with principles of officer safety. Obviously, there are times in which nothing that you try can avoid the need to use force. And in those case, in those times, so be it. But what we're trying to do is reduce that to the absolute necessity at minimum.
So, I want to thank you for, we've got a couple of the questions, but I want to thank you for being here. I want to thank Chief Walsh for bringing you up. We have five new officers that just came up and were presented to us, and I'm, I'm sure that they don't, well, they don't have the experience of a Chief Walsh or a captain. We don't have the captain here tonight, or one of our sergeants here. But there's a human factor involved as well. And at what, we've got this wonderful booklet, sort of booklet of guidelines and everything. At what point would you expect an officer, is it two years, three years, to have that experience, or is it the individual going in there? Go ahead.
I don't, I don't think there's a, there's a magic number to that. I mean, I, I think that there are, I've met a lot of officers and had a lot of conversations with officers while I've done this work. And there are some who are just, have a way of talking to people that keep them out of force situations. That, so it's, it's innate for some officers, but it's also something that definitely can be learned. And, and, you know, whether it's two years, three years, I think it, what matters a lot is the leadership of the agency, the quality of the training, what kind of experiences you get to have in training, whether you have the opportunity to kind of grapple with real, realistic scenarios. And then, you know, who you're surrounded with, the other officers that you're learning from, and the expectations of the agency. So, if you, if you, if you know you use, if you, if you use force, and you're going to have to answer to your sergeant, your captain, maybe even the chief, about, well, okay, you know, what did you do before that that you might have, that might have helped you avoid that situation? You know, that, that's different than, than in agencies where those questions are never asked.
I think that's kind of like, I think maybe Chief Walsh, did you have a comment on this, or? Okay, sure. Okay, sounds good. Councilor Mosby.
I'm going to, you know, thank the chief for being proactive with this. And was it, has anything like this been done before? In the archives somewhere over there?
Not that I've found in Lompoc, no. Definitely in Portland, when I was there, I was, worked with Mike and, and Julie.
And on the twenty-three recommendations here, did, how many of you implemented and gone through? And what kind of response are you getting from your, your people?
So, I would say, we're at about eighty percent resolution, I would say, on the recommendations. The response has been well-received, haven't had any pushback. You know, the union kind of came in saying, hey, what's going on? And we think we're doing everything right. And, and I agree, they, they, they do use force. Okay, you know, but we need to, to look for, and we need to learn from it. And if you notice, about fifty percent of our officers working patrol right now have less than two years on the job. So, it's kind of scary for me, but it's also an opportunity to have them come up in a police department that thinks about force. And then, once you're done using it, okay, how did that go? What could I have done better? Hey, what, what'd you see? What did I see? I mean, they talk about it in roll call. They have to write down. And when, and when we say, "report force," maybe it's important to say, we always, when we use force, we write it on our criminal police report, and it goes to the district attorney. This is a different, this is an administrative look at it. So, they say what they did there, that goes to their sergeant. The sergeant critiques the force, makes recommendations, or says, hey, it looks good, and then it goes to the captain, and then it comes to me. So, there's, there's a lot of levels looking at it. And there's a lot of opportunity to come back and say, you know, you probably could have waited for cover, because it wasn't an emergency call, or hey, maybe you should have thought of X, Y, and Z, you know? And, and that way, it's, we're learning from our force. So, and the pushback has been almost minimal. We changed our report form from a one-page to a two-page, and Alan Chisholm is my professional standard sergeant. He creates forms, and so now we can data mine this, this data that we're collecting too.
Yeah, it looks like a lot of these are about more information gathering, more data gathering, as well as some increased training on some of the items, which are definitely, like you say, with the, the age of the officers in there right now.
We've rewritten, we've rewritten our use of force. We've rewritten our TASER policy. We're looking at foot pursuits. It's funny, Duncan's been in two, and he's been on patrol in a week. That's the way it goes sometimes. But there's some learning curves there. He doesn't know what he's doing yet. He's like a six-month-old labrador chasing a tennis ball. So, so we'll talk with him about, okay, you know, you kind of got far away from your training officer, and stuff like that. So, that's why we do this. That's why we look at it.
Well, it's a good way it's, it's broken down. Hope the public gets to see a little bit by, by giving scenarios that are out there, and then representing back and coming up with the recommendations. So, you answer some of the questions in the scenarios as well. So, thank you, guys.
You know, I, I just got to say one thing. These, these two attorneys are being so humble. They've talked to thousands of police officers. They've been all over the country. These are the two top accountability attorneys in the business. We're really lucky to have them here. We're really lucky to have them here.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Why didn't you look at the deadly force?
It just happened, so happened that during the period of our audit, there were no shootings. So, it just, it was just serendipitous that there wasn't any. But there may come a time when we may end up wanting to look at that, if in fact, we can get the carrier to pay for, pay for some kind of review.
Okay. Anyone else? Well, again, I want to thank you for coming. Chief Walsh, did you have anything else to say?
I, I was just going to say, we've had four Austrian Wall shootings since I came here, but I had nothing to do with that. It's just the way, the cookie crumbles. Literally, it is, you know? So, but, you know, maybe in the future, we could have them come back and look at our shootings.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming up here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you, too. City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Think I've been to about 100 or so Lompoc City Council meetings, and it is with great mixed emotion that I address you at my last one. And I have two things I'd like to cover. First of all, it's to say thank you. I really have appreciated the opportunity that's been extended to me here. We, my family and I have grown to love Lompoc. I plan to continue to stay here as a resident, and I just am thrilled at the opportunity that I was provided over the last four years. Thank you. The second thing I wanted to point out is that I have been extremely blessed here, not only over my opportunity and my job, but to work with just an exemplary group of people. You have some top-flight professionals in this organization. And I am proud to call them my colleagues, and I'm going to miss them. And if I have one challenge to you as the private citizen I'm about to become in this community, is to take care of them and defend them when they need defense, and to support them and to lift them up when they need that. It's hard to explain the challenges that people in the positions that we have around the city that they face on a daily basis. It's not an easy job. If it looks easy from the outside, it's because we've got some talented people making it look easy. But it's not. So, please, take care of my colleagues. I'm entrusting them into your hands. Thank you so much for your opportunities. Thanks.
Patrick.
Yeah.
We also want to thank you for the length of time you've been here, for all of your accomplishments, and we wish you the absolute very best. Even though you're going to our competitor right up the street, but we do wish you the best, and good luck to you and your family in the future. And again, thank you very much for the time you spent with us. Public comment on the consent calendar. You have three minutes to speak to us for anything on the consent calendar. Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, and we are going to come back to the council. The consent calendar consists of things that are generally considered routine and will be passed with one motion and a second unless a council member chooses to pull an item. Councilmember Mosby.
I'd like to pull item number five.
Okay, item number five is going to be pulled. Anything else? I just, well, Councilmember Starbuck.
Just a quick question. Mr. Wyman Miller, on item three here, the rents, mobile home rent stabilization, is this a required committee that we have to have? I mean, this is not convened since 2005. It's just something we've never been able to, to man a committee on. It's just, can we just do away with this one? Is there a requirement?
I'm, I'm going, that sounds like a legal question. I'm going to defer to the city attorney. To my knowledge, there's nothing other than your own, you created the ordinance that created the requirement, and generally, the body that creates the requirement can uncreate it. But I'm going to defer to the city attorney.
That's correct. That's correct. There's no state or federal requirement that you have this ordinance, this board, or this process set up. It was a decision made several years ago by a city council because of the assistance a body like this can have in mobile home park rent issues.
Councilmember Vega.
I think we should pull number three also for more discussion.
Okay.
And see if it's even necessary with the process that we have this, this group available.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Oh, Councilmember Starbuck.
I move we accept consent calendar minus items three and five.
Okay, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, staff presentations. Do we have any staff presentations? Okay, we don't have any. Okay, oral communication. This is your opportunity to speak to us for up to three minutes on anything that can become, can come before this council.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. Recent revelations regarding Lompoc union contract benefits suggests collusion between city management and union leadership. The recently reported benefits are not reasonable or ordinary. They allude to an elite class of workers, government-union worker sovereignty over citizen taxpayers. Management generally goes along with union requests to oppose the union position may elicit lifelong retribution. This dynamic is responsible for legislation and rulemaking as well. Union interests carry the vote to draft and establish laws and rules. The middle class is being priced out of California. California taxes are among the highest in the nation. Two-thirds of Californians can't afford housing. The West Coast homeless population is exploding and being compared to Third World conditions. That comparison is false. The United Nations requires refugee camps in Third World countries to provide an environment free of human feces and no more than 50 people per toilet provided. Homeless Californians' environment is far below that standard. In Lompoc, fees were raised which prohibited homeless RV owners from even emptying their tanks to properly dispose of waste. Government-union contracts control most aspects of life in California. I urge you to pause all union contracts and hire a city manager willing and able to return governance back to the citizens of Lompoc.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Council. Dwayne Homedall, local resident, been here a long time. I think the one thing that's interesting that I haven't heard anybody talk about is that what the railroad has done to get its tracks back in order. We've been driving over those tracks and asking, and we asked the city for over 20 years, and, but nobody could do anything until Patrick got here. And he found out what the deal was, went to Tom, and anyway, it could have been a lawsuit that would have saved us. Haven't had it. I don't know if you ever had any problem with the tracks, but I've been fighting those tracks for a long time. And I had one lady that broke her leg in it, you know, the front end of her car was lost and such. So, I mean, I think Patrick needs a pat on the back for, for doing that, but very few people knew that he was. And nobody in the council I've ever heard say anything good, good about, since the job is done. So, it's kind of an interesting thing. We've heard some real good things tonight, and I'm going to make mine short. The whole thing I wanted to do is I'd like to see Victor Vega and Mosby thank Patrick and instead of condemning like he did in that meeting, because right now, Lompoc and the county of Santa Barbara is a laughingstock of what goes on at the council meeting.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else rise, we're going to close our communication, and we're going to go to appointments. Okay, the first is an appointment to Parks and Recreation Commission, and that is Councilmember Starbuck.
Yes, I'd like to go ahead and nominate Steve Bridge to the Parks and Rec Commission.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. I don't see Mr. Bridge in the audience, but congratulations. And the next, we are going to appoint a mayor pro tem for the year 2018. Councilmember Starbuck.
I'd like to nominate Janelle Osborne for mayor pro tem.
Okay, and do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Oh, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay.
Don't embarrass me.
Okay, discussion moved and seconded. Let's vote. Passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Okay, let's see, move on to item number 10, which is a public hearing regarding adoption of ordinance number 1643, parentheses 17, establishing a district-based system of elections. Mr. Penoni.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I think we're now rounding the bend to the homestretch. This is the sixth public hearing you've had, and this is still a public hearing that was required by state law because of the decision that you made to introduce the ordinance last time, changing elections to district elections. And so, tonight is the final step of adopting that ordinance. If you have any questions that haven't been answered yet, I will do that if you ask them. I do have one correction I want to make to the record. Councilmember Osborne asked me last time whether we could change, whether the change could have both, all four positions elected in 2018 and then have it staggered four and two. And I said, well, technically, you probably could. Actually, technically, you can't. I'm glad you didn't try to do it, based on my advice. The reason you can't do it is because state law doesn't allow you to decrease or increase a term more than one year. So, that's why it couldn't have been done. So, I'm with that. I will wait for any question you may have.
Any questions? Okay, then, thank you very much. Public comment. Seeing no one rise, we'll bring it back to the council. I just have a comment, even though I didn't think it was, this was necessary in this community. I'm, I'm very pleased with the way it all came out. It went pretty seamless. I think, from what I've read and what I, what I've seen, I think the community will probably benefit from this. We certainly, the appearance that has happened was so seamless that I think we're getting a lot of good press in the community. So, I want to thank the council, I want to thank staff for working with us, Mr. Penoni. I think we did the right thing, so, thank you very much. Any other discussion? And I'll entertain a motion. Let's see, do we have a motion, or is this just staff recommends the city council to a public hearing and adopt, adopt ordinance? Yes. So, we need a motion to adopt ordinance number?
Public comment.
No, we were asked for public comment already.
Oh.
Yeah. Okay, Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance of 1643, in parentheses, 17.
Okay.
So, I'd like to make that motion that we accept.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let's vote. Okay, passes 5-0. Thank you. Let's see, number 11 is adoption of resolution 6150, parentheses 17, approving the local goals and policies of community facility districts.
Mayor, council members, members of the audience, I'm up here representing the group of the staff that put this together, as well as the consultant who is here today from SCI Consulting. Blair is our consultant who's been working with us on the process for creating the CFD environment for future developments, and he has a presentation that we'll be doing momentarily. But I'd like to go through a couple of items that are in the staff report. CFDs have been included in several of the planning commission development agreements, development projects to fund services that are not otherwise have resources available for them. A CFD is an agency that's created by a governmental entity. It can be created by a city, special district, county, several other different agencies. In our, in our situation, the one thing we haven't done before is to create a CFD. So, to do a CFD, any CFD or a number of CFDs, the state law that was enacted in 1982 requires us to have local rules and policies that are adopted by the council prior to enacting any sort of community facility districts. This step right tonight is that request to adopt local rules and policies regarding the type of CFDs that we are contemplating, as well as the various requirements of the law that we have to address. There are a handful of those that will be presented later on in the presentation, but the, the rules have to spell out certain things. Our rules go a little bit further than that by addressing the formation process, debt issuance criteria and things like that. So, with that, I will hand it over to Blair from SCI Consulting to go through the presentation. And after that, Blair, myself, Teresa, and Brian would be available for questions.
And good evening, Mayor, council members. Again, my name is Blair Oz, and I am with SCI Consulting Group and pleased to be here this evening to, to present to you the proposed local goals and policies for community facility districts. Before I, before we go too far into the actual policies, I thought I'd just take just a few minutes to a high level, just talk about community facilities districts. As, as Brad had indicated, the CFDs, the enabling legislation is the Melrose Community Facilities Act, and that was passed in 1982. And it was really in response to Proposition 13, which dramatically curtailed property tax revenue for, for cities, counties, and special districts. And so, in response to that, this was, this was passed to allow cities and counties, special districts, to, to fund facilities and, and services. One of the, one of the, shortly after Proposition 13, it was really, growing communities were having trouble just funding, funding infrastructure projects on new public facilities. And so, that was really the, this act, and then along with the, the prevalence of landscape and lighting districts as well, became, became predominant. So, the, the community facilities district is essentially a financing district that, and the issuers are, as Brad indicated, cities, counties, special districts, school districts, JPAs. And the, the financing district authorizes the levy of a special tax to fund facilities or, or improvements. So, it's great land-secured financing for facilities, and it's, it's, it's also a great alternative to landscape and lighting districts. And we can talk about that as we get into it. So, in the, the range of public facilities that, that can be financed with a CFD is, is actually very broad. It, in the act, it, it actually specifies the purchase, construction, expansion, improvement, rehabilitation of any real or tangible property with a useful, useful life of five years or more. So, really, and so, what's important here when we talk about facilities, it's really, it's not necessarily buildings, it's, it's actually capitalized improvements. The, and in the act, there's a, there's a list of, of identified facilities, but one of them is just, you know, government facilities. So, you could, should, you should just generally consider that any, any public facility can be financed with CFDs. Also, you can pay off assessment and special tax liens with, that are within the CFD. That, that's an allowable use. Also, in some cases, privately-owned, publicly-regulated facilities are Also, in some cases, privately owned, publicly regulated facilities are eligible as well. And an additional point, the facilities that are financed with a CFD don't necessarily need to be within, within the boundaries of the community facilities district. Now, so despite the title, community facilities district, the act actually included a list of services that may be financed by, with CFDs. So this, this list is, is very specific and a little bit more limited than, than facilities. So predominantly, service CFDs are using the top one here of the bulleted list, the maintenance and lighting of parks, parkways, streets, roads and open space. And so you, you may be familiar with landscape and lighting districts that sort of operate the same way, where there's a property assessment to fund those types of maintenance improvements, maintenance and services. I wanted to just highlight one thing on the maintenance and lighting of parks, parkways, streets, roads and open space. In the act, the, the term maintenance also includes the replacement, any replacement costs, or the funding of an associated reserve fund for replacement costs. So that can be helpful as well. And so there's the, and then there's a list of some other eligible services. And I just, just to highlight recreation programs, and we'll get to this a little bit more, recreation programs require a registered voter election, so that's one service that you can't necessarily impose on new development, it must be a registered voter election. Let's jump to that next. So with the formation of a community facilities district, you're, you're authorizing the, you're asking the voters to authorize the levy of a, of a special tax for those facilities or, and services. When, when you, the process to form a CFD, the first thing that needs to be done is you need to determine the qualified electors, and it requires two-thirds support of their qualified electors. So in the, in the instance where, and this is the more rare use of CFDs, but it is, it's possible, that you can look at an inhabited area, it could be the entire boundaries of the city, or some area that's inhabited, and specifically has more than twelve registered voters within the boundaries of the proposed CFD. That would actually require a typical special tax selection, a register, one vote per participating registered voter. So those, those types of elections are a little bit rare, because the city can also levy sales tax measures, TOT measures, you can also levy just a different type of a special tax as well. So it's, these are a little bit more uncommon, these are a little bit uncommon. Predominantly, CFDs are used to fund the impact from new development. Either the, in some instances, the backbone infrastructure of new development, or the impact on certain, on certain services that, that we listed here earlier. And so, in the event that you propose, there's a proposed CFD for an area that is primarily just new development, and technically, there's less than twelve registered voters within the CFD, that would be called a landowner special tax selection, and require two-thirds support. However, you'd, the vote would be one vote per acre or portion thereof, and it's a vote of the, of the landowners. And so that's predominantly the, the special taxes you do.
So, sir?
Yes.
In this case, if someone owned three acres, they would receive, they'd have three votes?
That's correct. And again, the, again, you're, you identify the boundaries of the district, and then you need to determine a, a special tax formula. So first, and also, of course, you need to describe the facilities and services that would be financed by the CFD, and then come up with a special tax formula. CFDs are actually becoming even more, more popular. They allow, particularly when you're, when you're looking to fund the impact from new development, because they allow for a lot of creativity and flexibility for the city and the landowner. So you can actually customize the, the funding mechanism based upon the, the development plans, and, and you can, and so that's, that's one of the real benefits. The amount is based upon lot size, you know, land use density, building square footage, acreage, and you have a lot of flexibility in how you, the rate and method of apportionment of that, of that tax. It just needs to be, the requirement is, just needs to be fair and reasonable. As, the, the one legal requirement is that it might, it must not be based upon ad valorem taxes, because then that would be considered a general tax, and that's, that's restricted to one percent by Proposition thirteen. And again, in, in, in the, in the area of funding services, namely landscaping and lighting types of services, we're, we're finding that CFDs are a common alternative because they do not require the special and general benefit findings of, required with the landscape and lighting district. And we can go into that if you'd like, we can go into the comparisons. You, my understanding is that you, you, you do not have any landscape and lighting districts beyond the one that funds your aquatics facility. So going into, just, just an overview of the local goals and policies. So the, the act actually prescribes just some minimum contact. It, it asks for five policy statements that need to be, need to be made. And so that's what's, that's what's shown in the policies that are before you this evening. The, we've also added a section just on procedures for the formation and administrative process, that's just some additional contact. But really, really what these policies are, are, you know, they just provide guidance to, to staff and the developers, there's, they, they provide for consistency of practice, and they provide some assurances to the city, and then some assurances to the development community. And, and so the, 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 these policies are sort of the best practices of cities that are currently levying CFDs. I think if you were to gather similar, gather policies for other cities, and you put them together and look at them, they're going to be, they're pretty much the same, I mean, very consistent, because you're really just looking at five, five elements. The, the, one of the important things just to note is that these policies of, within any policies can be supplemented, amended or waived at any time by a resolution of the council. And so, and with, part of the process to form a new community facilities district is just to read through those policies and make sure that you're compliant to those policies, but there are sometimes, because of the, the unique aspect of the development project before you, that there might be a need to amend those policies. But that, that process is, is already built into the, the formation process. So here are the five policy objectives that are required for you to address. The first is a, a statement of the priority that various kinds of public facilities and services would have on CFD financing. So we've, we've essentially, we allowed you a lot of flexibility, the eligible facilities and services are actually those that are authorized by the act. You certainly have within your purview to, to restrict those if you so desire, but we've allowed you a lot of flexibility, and just, at this point, your, whatever's authorized by the act is also author, your, are eligible under these policies. The, the, the top priorities are, the top priorities are services first, and then eligible facilities, and then private facilities would be considered a lower priority. There, there is, weaved into all of the policies, there are some situations that indicate that they can be, they can be considered on a case-by-case basis. Again, that just allows the city a little bit more flexibility. So you, there could be an instance where development impact fees are financed by the CFD. You can, services to be provided by other public agencies could also be incorporated into, into your CFD. Facilities owned and operated by other public agencies could be, could be included as well. The, the refinancing, as I indicated earlier, of, of any special taxes or assessment liens within the CFD could be financed. And then, and then private facilities under some certain cases. And so those are, in the policies are also considered on a case-by-case basis. So certainly with these policies, at any time, you could, you know, strike them out or keep them in, but as they're drafted, they're, they're very flexible in, in general in nature. The next is the credit quality requirements and criteria. So the, one of the, one of the requirements is that the reserve, there's a reserve fund established with any bond issuances at ten percent of the original bond proceeds, and that the, for a bond issuance, the, the value to debt ratio needs to be at least four to one. And, and then, we've also incorporated that the city may, at its discretion, require any additional credit enhancements to increase the credit quality of any CFD bond issuance. The, the next is disclosures. So the, you need to make a statement concerning the steps to be taken to ensure prospective property purchasers are fully informed of their taxpaying obligations under the CFD. So one of the processes for every formation, you're going to need to create a, a notice of special tax document, and you need to make that available upon request of any, any seller of property, because they, they're going to need to legally disclose that to, to the purchaser of the, of the property. And then additionally, with any bond issuances, the, the Security and Exchange Commission requires some continuing disclosure reporting, and so that has been incorporated as well as a, as a policy requirement. The next is the, the equity of special tax formula and the maximum special tax. So one of the important aspects here is that in terms, so with, with, with developed property, you want to have an aggregate tax burden no greater than, than two percent. So ad valorem taxes would, by definition, are at one percent of ad valorem taxes. This, this policy is essentially saying that other assessments, taxes and liens and obligations shouldn't exceed anything more than an additional one percent. And you'll find that that's, that's typically the standard for, for cities, counties, special districts across the board, is establishing that threshold of a maximum aggregate tax burden of two percent. I would say that there are some cities, counties that adopt a little bit more conservative aggregate burden of point one eighth percent. And so that's, so we've left it a little bit more flexible for you at, at two percent, but that's something for you to consider. And then, and then also in the policies in this area, it goes through a laundry list of, of some of the, the costs that can be included in the special tax, tax formula. And then, and then lastly, are appraisals. So there's a, a statement needs to be made regarding the, the definition of, definition standards and assumptions to be used for, for required appraisals for bond issuances. And so, very simply, the, and this is pretty standard for all, all CFD policies, that it acknowledges the required, the, the guidelines of the California Debt Advisory Commission, or CDAC. And so they actually have some guidelines that, in this case, and so we've, the policies ask, ask you to follow those guidelines, and in the event that the, and it's called the Uniform Standards of Professional Appraisals Practices, the, the standards for typical appraisers, if, if there's any, any discrepancy between the CDAC's policies and their own policies, that those policies would, would govern. So those are the, those are the, those are the policies in, in general. Are there any, any questions?
Questions? Okay, we may have some later, though, for you.
All right.
Stick around. Okay, we'll open this up to the public.
Nick Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. So just a general question, I don't know if any of you can address it, or if the gentleman can address it. But the purpose of this was for a very specific project that is being proposed, and once this ordinance is, or whatever this is put in place, is it then something that could be used outside of that area and other areas of the city, and will have any impact on other property owners that already developed and established?
Okay, why don't we bring them back up here to address that, because I think it's an important part, part.
So to be clear, the, the, the intent of the, of the city at this juncture is to use this funding mechanism for, for future, for future development. So in the case of Burton Ranch specific plan, they're, part of their, the conditions of approval is for them to mitigate their impacts on certain city services, namely the landscaping and lighting and open space areas within the project. And so this, so this tax would be levied on those future homeowners, and they would just pay that additional tax. And so it's really for, for, it's really a funding mechanism primarily for future development. But as I'd indicated in my earlier remarks, it, it's conceivable that the, that the city could use, form a community facilities district special tax on a citywide basis, and, and these got, these policies would, would govern. But at this time, that's not being contemplated, as I'm, as I'm aware, yeah.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Just to add to that, you know, I wanted to reinforce that, yes, the, the plan is to use it for future new development. That having been said, in two of the cities I've worked before coming to Lompoc, we had situations where new development came in, they had a CFD, and neighbors that might be across the street, not in that CFD, noticed the higher level of care, either because of common landscaping or monumentation, or the, the quality of the street covering, and would say, hey, how come we, we're not get, we don't have that? And we would say, because those homeowners pay extra for that. And we actually had homeowners that gathered together and decided amongst themselves, they would like to have that additional level of infrastructure in place. We actually had people vote that into place. So I, I just wanted to say that, not to rule out the topic, but the only time we've done it in either of the cities I was in, was when it was being requested by the homeowners, not something that we, the city staff, were trying to spread out to existing homeowners.
And it would be sort of a registered voter election, requiring two-thirds support of those voters within the boundaries of the district participating, and so it could be, again, citywide measure, or particular subdivisions, neighborhoods, different aspect areas of the community. So you have a lot of flexibility there.
Councilor Mosby.
I think to get to it and answer the question that was asked is, that it's, as it states in the staff report, that each project requires separate formation process, requiring two-thirds of the electors within the CFD area to vote, to form the CFD. So what this is doing, and again, in that paragraph, is it's providing flexibility for the creation of, so this is just help to advance down the line, but before anybody's going to do anything else, whatever happens over there is not going to happen everywhere else, and there's, you know, not a panic level. It's just trying to be more flexible and It's just trying to be more flexible and go to the next step to make it easier for somebody else to bring it through a CFD, correct?
Exactly.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one rise, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to the council. Councilor Starbuck.
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and make recommendation. We've already discussed the CFDs before with one of the projects currently the developers asked us to do it. So, I'm just going to go ahead and say that we adopt a resolution 6150, print C-17.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Yes, Councilor Mosby.
A statement was made that there aren't any others. Does Stone Brook have a special lighting district? Is that similar to this?
The only one that was mentioned was the citywide assessment district for the Park and Pool debt project. But there are three other developments that have gotten planning commission approval with this as a requirement. So, Mosaic Walk, some of you, and I can't think of the other one.
River Terrace.
River Terrace.
But isn't there a lighting district in that area?
I believe that's run by an HOA. I could be mistaken. I don't know if...
I think so, too, because I think they pay that themselves.
Okay. Yeah. You have the discussion. Let's vote. My pass is 5-0. Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to number 12, which is sponsorship request from Santa Barbara County Ventners Association. Do I see Mario? Oh, you're going to -- you don't look like Mario.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the community. Teresa Galavan, Economic Development Director, Assistant City Manager. And we have before you a request from the Santa Barbara County Ventners Association. They would like to return to Lompoc to have their grand tasting in April. Lompoc used to host this event at River Park. The last time I think we hosted it was in 2010, and then the event went to other communities. But they are interested in coming back and are, in order to have a successful event, would like to ask the council consideration for sponsorship. So, we did a walkthrough with the organizers out at River Park to really gather and make sure we understood all the things that they were needing and wanting the city to cover costs for. And we put those together here in the staff report, and it comes to $12,435 in park use fees, campground rental fees, because they would, and they did this in the past, have the folks in the campgrounds would have to be relocated for a few days to another area. We do have long-term renters there. We would not want to lose, and it is a city policy that those accommodations be made if indeed we go this direction. And then, there are some other costs as well involved there lined out in the staff report. So, in 2009 and '10, the city did support the event to the tune of anywhere from $5,300 to $5,900 back then. And now, moving forward, we'd just like to bring this to your consideration. It does attract about 2,500 people is the estimate of the number of people it would bring into town for this attraction. And the organizers of the event are here today. If you have any questions, Fran Klow is with us. She has the request here. And then, there's the sponsorship package attachment also to the staff report that lets us know how the city of Lompoc would be recognized for its sponsorship. And Dirk Ishawata is here for any questions regarding parks and some of those impacts.
Okay, so, I just have a couple of questions. I don't know if you want to answer them, or if the applicant wants to answer them. So, it looks like, according to the staff report, the request is for up to the $12,000 or some portion thereof. Okay. In the past, it's been probably around $5,000. So...
Okay, so, I didn't realize the -- I'm Fran, and I didn't realize that in the past there was a value on the services that were in hospitality that was being extended to the Ventners Association. So, and in fact, I always went before the park commission. And actually, we had the festival from 2007 to 2011, and we certainly enjoyed the hospitality of Lompoc. We would really appreciate any consideration in the reduction of the fees. And we'd also like to point out that some of the enhancements that we're asking for in the park will be enjoyed by people afterwards. For instance, we asked that your speed bumps have paint on them so that when people drive over them, they can actually see the speed bumps, because we had problems in the past with that. The cleanup of the campsites will enhance the look of the park in the future. And so, we don't think that we're asking for extraordinary means. So, we're -- we certainly, you know, are looking forward to having the festival in Lompoc. And I would like to say that a board member, Kate Griffith, is here to also support.
You know, in 2010, it was 2010 was the last time you had it here?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay. I don't know if it's -- you had it here twice, is that correct? Was it just once? Just once or twice was here?
It was here each year, 2007, 2008, et cetera.
Okay, so, one of the years, I believe it was only one of the years, there was a terrible traffic jam.
Yes.
Okay, is that going to be addressed?
Well, yes, it was true. When we first started out, you know, it's whenever you're in a new site, you're learning. But what we did to ameliorate that condition was that we had everybody turning right so that there was no crossing of traffic, and we actually got people out of there within 20 minutes.
Okay. And so, that was exiting.
Yes.
Is that where the major problem was? I remember there was a highway patrol officer sitting there.
Yes, yes.
Wasn't directing traffic at all. I don't know if that was just to sort of control traffic, or...
Because, yes, we hire the CHP to be there. They have requested that we hire four of them this time. We will do that. But in addition to the CHP, we also have Miller Event Management, who we contract for security services, including traffic management.
Okay. And the other question I have is probably either for Teresa or Mr. Ishawata. Are we creating a slippery slope for other organizations with the sponsorship here? For instance, the Flower Festival, the Spring Arts Festival, the Dog Show, is, I know, are we going to be all of a sudden being required to prevent or provide sponsorships for all these organizations?
Well, we do currently sponsor several city events. The Flower Festival is probably one of the biggest sponsorships. We had the Color-Thon that we provided some support to. So, we do, we do, there are community events that the council has asked, been asked to consider supporting, if it brings an economic impact, or if it's bringing tourism, and they would, so, you know, that, I think that that has already been happening on occasion, and there may be other ones that want to come forward and ask in the future.
Okay.
And I will add that you do have a partner in this already, if it lands here?
Oh, yes.
Did you want to share that?
Sure. Okay, so, we know for sure that we have the support of the community. The Lompoc, Explore Lompoc, excuse me, is granting us $20,000 to advertise this event. This brings our total advertising budget to about $95,000. We say $95,000. I do a lot of advertising by trade and barter, but the total value of that package will be, of course, you will be seeing Lompoc in many, many different publications, and in the internet, social media, et cetera. So, it brings a lot of recognition to the city.
So, then, my last question is, are you working with our Chamber of Commerce? Because I remember one year, they provided wonderful weather, and the other, there's another year that they provided terrible weather. So, you're working with them? I'm just kidding.
(laughing).
Okay, any questions from the council? Okay, we'll open this up to the public. Kate, you have to have something to say.
You thank me.
You've never been that lost for words.
Kate Griffith, Board Director for the Ventners Association and co-owner of Flying Goat Sellers. Well, some of you will remember that I was working for the city in 2007 when we brought the Ventners Festival here for the first time, and it was really exciting. And five years of hosting it, it was a pretty big deal for our community. And I hope that we can all embrace it again, because it's been a long time coming to get it back. Timing's right, and let's seize the opportunity and help out in every way we can, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the community? Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back to the council. So, a couple of things we need to decide. Number one, if we want to offer sponsorship, and if we do, to what extent? So, entertain some discussion. Councilmember Osborne.
So, I welcome the event back to Lompoc, and I'm very excited that you're looking at coming back to our community. I know that it has been a cornerstone of not only the Ventners organization, but at one time, to tourism here, and I'm glad that Explore Lompoc has already agreed to support you. I'm respectful of the need to reduce your costs and could see supporting the park use fee being waived. Unfortunately, because of your request to displace long-term campers, and the fact that that requires that displacement to be reimbursed, I can't waive that nearly $7,800. So, the only offer I could make there is reconsider your six days. So, the question being, is six days the most you need them gone, given, I believe, if I remember correctly, Saturday is your full-day event where you have everybody there and you're setting up and tearing down the days before? Is that correct? So, you might be able to reduce your cost by not having six days of campers gone?
Okay. The reason that we do that is because setup begins on Tuesday. And yes, the event is over with on Saturday afternoon, but they come back to take the canopies. And we're, we ask this for the safety of those people.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I'm comfortable waiving the park use fee for support, but requiring that the Ventner Association pay the campground rental and the long-term camper fee, I'm up for discussion about the other fees. The park enhancement requirement of $500, given the statement that we have an enterprise fund that has $250,000 in it, and these $500 worth of park enhancements need to be done anyway, I think we should carry that burden. So, my recommendation would be to waive the park use fee, to reduce it, and if fellow council members supported the fire inspection fee or the alcohol permit fee added to that, but not the rental fees or the long-term camper fee.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes.
Yeah. Councilor Mosby.
Did you have a total dollar on that that you're offering up?
If it includes just the 3875 and the 500, it's only 4375. And if you include the two additional permit fees, it would be 4635.
So, your motion is the park use fee...
That we absorb the park use fee and the park enhancement, and if council agrees the two additional fees. But I'm just starting with the park use fee and the park enhancement.
So, if there's a second, if you may, the second may want to include those other fees in as well. Councilor Starbuck.
Just a couple of comments here. I'm glad we're kind of going in this direction. We have not waived fees as a council since, I mean, the Color-Thon, we didn't waive. Little nonprofits, we haven't waived. I think the cost in painting and cleaning, just the camping area alone, will exceed the $500 that is budgeted here, because I see a lot more work than that. One thing I noticed about your presentation here, it seems like everybody's getting paid except the city on this. And then, we referenced something about sponsored levels and stuff. Well, there's 36 tickets, 26 tickets, and all that. I think a determination should be made who the city would donate those to, or raffle off, or something. But I'd like to hear some of the other council before I second your motion.
Councilor Vega.
One of my questions would be that Explore Lompoc has donated to the advertising budget. Have they indicated any movement toward the other costs, should you not be approved for any of these concessions?
No.
It's a no, okay. And is there a reason for that? That they won't go the other way?
No.
They just said no?
You have to be on the microphone.
That was never part of the discussion or the conversation.
Can I ask?
And I would just like to say one other thing. So, the fees that you have put forth, the list, the laundry list there, is between two, or between three and four times what we would pay for a site. So, that's one of the reasons, you know, we would really appreciate that consideration.
Okay. Are you still on? Councilor Vega?
Yeah, it's kind of unclear the answer. I get it, but it wasn't offered, but it wasn't asked for either. So, that would be my comment.
Councilor Mosby.
Yeah, I'm all for sponsorships and such when you have the money to sponsor things. But in our current situation, we are with a budget right now, and enough people have had an opportunity to see what we're going on with our budget. But we've asked a lot of city staff to suspend increase in pays right now, and they're coming back at potentially a budget workshop in March to discuss and see if we can even move forward with that. You know, we're in a tight situation on getting our budget balanced to even get to this point right now. I don't think we're in a position right now that we can give up $12,000. I think it would be disrespectful for two, a lot of city staff that we have asked. We have close to $180,000 in equity pays and others that we have suspended right now to city employees because we didn't have much. We have, some of these are in parks positions. So, I think it'd be definitely unfair in our financial predicament that we're in right now to be able to give this up. I am for sponsorships. I'm in for people going out and getting that, but I tell you, I don't think the city's in a financial or fiscal capability of giving up these sponsors, or giving anything up.
Well, may I respectfully say that, yes, we're asking for the sponsorship, but what we are giving you is economic uplift. So, if you're looking for more revenue, you have a lot of people that will be staying in Lompoc, which is one of the reasons, if not the reason, that Explore Lompoc is backing us. And I would like you all to consider the economic condition.
And that was going to be exactly my comment, and that was the reason I asked about the slippery slope other organizations. We do offer sponsorships for the Flower Festival, the Dog Show, the, so, it's not that this is something different. It is all for our economic improvement that we offer these things, to get these people into our community, to spend their money, to stay in our hotels, to eat in our restaurants, to buy gasoline, spend a few days. So, I agree that we will be getting something towards our budget if we decide to do this. Yes, Galavan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. I just wanted to clarify that if there is an amount that you would like to sponsor, it's not a waiving of fees, but that we would go ahead and put funding towards covering those costs. So, just to clarify, there was some discussion about that. Also, in the park improvements, the $500, I just want to make clear that that doesn't cover the striping of speed bumps. So, if that is something that is very important, we can tell you what that cost is if you, but I think there maybe are some more essential things in here that you, at this point, would rather focus on. But just want to make sure that that's clear, that that's not in this proposal.
Councilor Mosby.
Yeah, I think it's a little abey normal, having the public come up and comment while we're making a discussion here, but let me follow up again. I'm well aware about... I'm well aware about how money returns and comes in, and maybe Explore Lompoc, the 20 grand they're putting forward could come to the city to help with the $12,000 offset, and that would be appropriate way to move on that, but in our situation right now, again, I don't think it's correct at this time. Granted, these other things that came forward are in the budget, the other sponsorships. We fought hard and dug deep to get through this and to get a balanced budget. But again, we have asked a lot of city staff to do without, and I don't think that we have it, I really don't.
Councilmember Osborne.
Again, my motion was not for the full $12,000. And secondly, you motioned to have quite a bit of money put back into the budget that had been put aside in case we needed to spend on elections. So, there is a pool of money available for situations like this, and to Ms. Gallivan's clarification, this would not be a waiver of fees, it would actually be a sponsorship that would come under line item budget from general fund. Is there an area in general fund that it would be a line item for sponsorship? And in return, we would get potentially at the $5,000 level or somewhere in between that. To councilmember Starbucks' question, I would like clarification from our legal representation regarding accepting the gift of tickets and parking passes, because that is part of the sponsorship level, and knowing that we don't take things like that in return for, but since this would be part of a sponsorship package, what are the rules regarding that?
The way the law is structured, the way it would work is those passes and parking passes would be presented to the city, and then the city administration would decide how they get dispersed.
Thank you. So, my motion stands that I would like to support sponsorship of $4,375.
And that is the park use fee?
And the improvements of $500.
And if the secondary wants to include the fire inspection fee and alcohol permit, they could include that as a...
Absolutely.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I'm thinking in that motion that maybe we could include donating the fees and the tickets to Explore Lompoc.
As a sponsor, they will receive tickets, I would think.
Twice as many?
I like where you're going with that, and I think we should donate the tickets to some entity, but given the sponsorship level that Explore Lompoc's going with, they're already going to get 36 tickets. So, I think there's time to figure out who the best direction to donate those to, and I completely agree that we should donate them, and I will back you on figuring out who we donate that to, if you'd like to have that discussion.
So, Councilmember Starbuck, were you going to second the motion?
Yeah, I'm going to just mention, I'm very torn with this because, like you say, we haggled over public facilities and public items and what we were going to do. I've been to the Ventners Festival, and one of the things that I happened to notice earlier once was that when everybody left River Park, they made a left, they didn't make a right, but now I guess everybody's going to make a right, and then a left to go to Santa Barbara, or are they coming into town? What is the draw that the Ventners Association's going to do? You keep saying we're going to be an economic boost, we're going to bring people here, but what's going to get them to cross the city limits and come into Lompoc?
I think it's, one of the great things is that you do have a lot of hotels here, and people love the fact that they can stay here and be close to the festival. So, you have people staying in your lodging establishments, you have people that are eating here, and, not to forget, that we do have wineries here, and so they will be tasting at the wineries, and that will bring income to the wineries. So, yes, there will be income from the people who are attending, because a lot of them will stay here.
Wait a minute. Councilmember Mosby has his light on. Councilmember Mosby.
Again, I just want to reiterate the budget. Yes, we had $183,000 in the general fund approximately. We did suspend, I believe, about $170,000 in equity pays in there, and you have $180,000 to balance the budget left in the kitty, and that's if all the numbers come in, as we're hoping to go through. That's over two years. I'm all for sponsorship if you can afford them, but in our case, we're not in a position right now, and I don't believe it's about, you know, the benefit and the potential public benefit that's coming through, but right now, in the act of fairness, that we ask to suspend equity pays to a lot of city employees, and you're going to pass it out like that? I just can't go along with it.
Councilmember Starbuck.
What I'm going to do, Ms. Gallivan, is I'm going to ask that after the Ventners Festival, that we get with Explore Lompoc and the hotels, I'll put a second on this for the amount that Councilmember Osborne asked for, but then again, like everything else, I like to always know what the return on our investment is. They should have a mean and average for what their April is for rooms. We should know. We should have a good idea of what our TOT tax will be, what restaurants are anticipating. I mean, the wine industry itself, you'll know if you're going to sell, you know, out of the tasting rooms during that period. If it pans out, we win. If it goes under, Mosby wins.
So, that is a second.
That's my second.
Okay, we have motioned a second. Councilmembers Vega.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment here. You know, the, I'm going to copy Dirk, can I make a quick comment about?
Yeah, we're up for discussion.
What I'm saying is the economic boost here for the town, I'm thinking of other businesses, so, along with Councilman Mosby, I also understand the budget aspect, but as a business owner, I also understand the economic boost that some of these businesses and restaurants and other places, you know, they're going to, there's, every time we open something, the shift of clientele moves, and these guys suffer, you know? Some people suffer, some people gain for two, three months at a time, you know, until you get used to the hamburger, you get used to the steak. So, I have to actually put my heart out there and feel for other businesses in town, so along with this, I think it could be an economic boost for the individual business owners, if not some of the franchises who are here, so I just have to look at that aspect of it also. I think that the amount that's being asked for initially is a lot, so I agree with Councilwoman Osborne that, hey, if we keep it within restraints. I do think that Councilman Starbuck has a good point there, that to meet with Explore Lompoc, they have their own entity out there from which they project and give out money, but sometimes, you know, when you put it out just for advertising, sometimes the fact that they possibly could assist with just getting the event here is something we need to look at in our economic strife. That's my point.
Any other discussion? No further discussion, let's vote. And that passes for one. Okay, we look forward to coming.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, now we, written communications.
Nothing more than you've already received.
Okay, now we're going to go to item number three. Let's see, I think, Councilmember Vega, you asked to pull item number three?
Yeah, I need a little guidance here from City Attorney Joe Panoni. Joe, we can undo this ordinance now. Could you give me maybe the outline of how we can go about doing this? Because I don't want to throw something out there that, to the Planning Commission, they have a lot bigger fish to fry, so to speak, other than the rent control board, so maybe you could give me a couple of alternatives or give the council a couple of alternatives, how we can approach this and maybe undo this ordinance, and who would take, would it just disappear? Obviously, it sounds like we don't have any obligation to keep this one in place. Maybe you could give us a little guidance on how we could move forward with that.
The particular chapter of the municipal code that we're talking about has two parts. One part is it limits the amount of increase that a mobile park owner can raise rents to 75% of the CPI. If that park owner wants to raise the rent more than that 75%, they have to come to the Mobile Home Rent Stabilization Board to get approval for that. The suggestion has been to have the Planning Commission act as that board. If you don't want to have the, I guess there's a couple of options. One is to get rid of that entire chapter, which would then mean there's no rent limitation on, there's no city rent limitation on how much a rent, a mobile home park could raise rents. There's some state limitations, but they're not specific like the cities. Or you could leave the percentage increase and not have any provision for the park owners to increase those rents, so you wouldn't need a board to determine that. Or you could have another board, create another board to serve that board, that function, but I'm assuming that if you didn't have a board that already existed, you'd then end up having the same problem you've had over the years of gathering enough people to serve on that board.
Yeah, I'm at odds here with having people that are controlling rates or controlling the amount of fees or rents raised, you know, here in this town, where we don't have an entity or anybody here that's wanting to be a part of this, so that we can have a quorum or consensus, so that we can move forward. I just don't think the Planning Commission is the one that, I can't imagine that they would even want this, you know, this responsibility. So, I think as a council, I'd like to maybe say, maybe we just pull back on this, leave it alone.
We could ask for a future staff report that would address the various options and explore them at that time.
If that's the proper way to do it, I'd love to do that, instead of putting this on the consent calendar, moving forward with this. I think it's just an issue that we can just do away with. I think Councilman Starbuck actually had a really good question and comment on the necessity of this board.
So, I talked to Teri Schwab, either yesterday or maybe even today, and I asked her, we haven't had a reason to meet the board, a reason to meet since 2005, I believe, and in that case, there were two parks that made major improvements, you know, repaving, new roads, something like that, and they had major investments. So, they came to the board and asked for permission to raise more than 75%. Or, yeah, 75, up to 75%? Yeah. And I believe they were granted, I don't know if they were or not, but, so those were the things. Very unusual that they would come, but you figure a park is going to make, if they're going to make a major improvement, they're going to try to want, they're going to want to try to recoup some of their money. So, I can see a need for this, or maybe a purpose, not maybe a need, but a purpose of it. Is the Planning Commission the best place for it? I don't know. I mean, someplace, maybe we give it the responsibility to the city manager. I mean, he's unpopular, she's going to be unpopular anyway, so. But I think we need to do something, either abolish it and just say it's free, the mobile home parks are free to its market rate. I mean, we've heard this during our budget, is let a free market ride. We could do that. Is that what we want to do, though? Going as long as the state limitations, so.
Yeah, I don't want to, I'm sorry, is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't want to hurt anybody. If somebody has a comment that says, hey, it's going to be, have a negative impact on all mobile home parks as far as affordability and low income, or by just allowing what we do with regular rental housing, we don't get involved in this, you know, until there is a need and somebody else can bring another referendum or something that says, hey, it's getting carried away here, and these guys are trying to increase our rates to a point where affordability is an issue. It doesn't sound like we have a lot of activity with this. So, I guess my issue is, just giving it to the Planning Commission doesn't seem like the right thing to do. I think that basically, Bob, if you think that maybe abolishing this thing and seeing where the market lies and leave it free market, see what happens there, unless there's a reason that someone can tell me why we have to control this.
Mr. Mayor, historically, the reason this city has this stabilization is the reason many cities have this stabilization and why the state has some criteria. It's because there was, in, we'll say, the '70s, '80s, there was a strong movement to protect the affordability of mobile home parks, and so that's what the policy reason for the city having adopted this, and the need for that hasn't changed.
And I think, I'm not going to make this as a general statement, but I'm going to make an assumption that many of our lower-income residents live in mobile home parks, so to completely abolish it and just let free market flow, I think we're going to have some angry people there.
You know, my question, Mr. Mayor, is if it's so important to some of these people, why isn't there more involvement from the people here that actually could be affected by that?
Sure, and that same question goes with 90% of the stuff.
I got you, I got you, but you know, it's a question that, hey, where are they at?
Yeah, and I agree with you, I agree with you, but I think if we weren't sitting up here on the dais, we may not have known about this either, so.
Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, I'd say currently, at this time, it's not something that's needed, but it's definitely, historically, it has been something that's needed, and it happens further south of us, you'll see. People get into a park like this, and it's, they use it as a mechanism to force the people out to build higher-valued housing. So, there's a reason to keep this in, and I think, granted, maybe the Planning Commission, right now, I think there's time for them to go through and be in that position. Should times get busy, maybe we need to go back another direction, but as a space holder, I think it's something right now that can work, should we need down the future to put it back out or councils down the future, but I think right now, it's something that we need to keep it in position.
I'm not sure which one of you were first over here.
Go ahead, you know, it's fine.
Councilmember Osborne.
I just have a question for Joe. How different are our ordinances from the state? Are we far more aggressive than the state at the number, at the 75% level, or?
The specific percentage is what is the difference, and that's what's important.
Councilmember Vega.
So, if we had, and we allowed the Planning Commission to take control of this, how can we put it to a point where they are not infringed upon as far as to have regular meetings? I'm not sure how often they meet anyhow. It doesn't sound like they meet too often, Bob, because we don't have a quorum and we haven't had involvement, so basically, can we minimize the amount of times the Planning Commission has to meet on this if we were to push it in that direction, in other words, so they won't be infringed upon?
Sure, I think they'd only meet when necessary, I mean, it's...
Right, the only time they meet is if a mobile home park owner wants to increase the rents above the 75%.
So, it could be another five years, six years?
So, I guess my other question is, I've seen a comment by one of the other Planning Commissioners that said, do we even want this responsibility, or do they feel that there's a need because it controls fees and controls rents? And so, maybe your input, Joe, on if that's just the normal direction we'd go for because they're in charge of building or planning and whatever? Are we just handing it off to someone so that we can make sure that it's taken care of? We're keeping it alive, we're giving it CPR, is that what we're doing?
You're handing it off to an, to a body that currently exists, so if the need ever arises, you actually have a body that can carry out the purposes of the ordinance. And whichever body you hand it to, you are the ones that decide what that body's responsibilities are.
Well, again, I can see the need if there's going to be tenancy issues and rent control issues, so if that's the direction we need to go, in other, in other words, to make sure that people are protected or have some sort of protection from park owners that might, I believe, Mr. Mayor, that you're saying that they could excessively raise fees without this in place?
Up to the state limits, yes.
Up to the state limits, okay, so there is a benefit to the people that live in these mobile home parks. Well, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Starbuck.
What I'd like to do is get a council consensus here. One of the things that we're just kind of flogging around up here about this now, one of the biggest difficulties with filling this committee is the composition that we have for it. Mobile homeowner, mobile home park owner on there. There are no local owners. That position has been forever empty. The composition of this board cannot be met. I think that we should put it on an agenda for future. I mean, as infrequent as this would happen, it should be a council item, it involves money and... It involves money and other things, not a planning issue. I mean, let's put it on an agenda, let's discuss it, we can iron out what makes the committee us, and just, it'd be a done deal then at that point. We have it in reserve if we ever need it.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'm asking for consensus.
I'll second.
What's that? Repeat the motion, bring it forward as you're, yeah.
Just bring it forward as a staff report later on. With, including the composition and including the council as the board for that, you know, what the composition was, why it won't be met, and putting us down as the Mobile Home Rent Stabilization Board.
Mr. City Attorney, is that sufficient?
Yes, what I'm hearing is you want the item to come back with you, to you, with the council being the board, but also with the discussion of other possibilities for other makeup of the board or other, other current commissions to serve that position.
Absolutely, Joe, none of us are experts on what we're talking about right now.
Okay, before I get a second, I have not asked for public comment on this yet, so anyone from the public want to say anything?
Nick Gonzalez, speaking as a resident. When I lived in Southern California, the rent control boards were a very big issue. However, I don't know that a planning commission would fulfill the need of the balance that was generally required or what was looked at to have a rent control board. Probably, the planning commission is probably comprised of all property owners, none of which own a mobile home or one, none of which rent a mobile home. Generally, the spirit is to get both people that are the owners and the renters. That being said, I think that's going to be hard to fill, whether it's a planning commission position or a city council position. So I would probably lean more towards either an abolishment or adoption of the state guidelines.
You have to show in public. Okay, close public comment, bring it back to the council. Do we have a second?
I'll give him a second. With a comment here also, so that we can maybe possibly make an adjustment. We gave Joe the direction to come back with us with other options, I believe. Why don't we just simplify this and say, hey, let's bring it back to council, council can make this in the meantime, until we get another, enough interest of people that want to actually put this board back together or we get some there. So as simple as that. That would be my correction to his motion.
No, I'll amend the motion to include that. I mean, whatever options are available to us in the staff report, I'd love to be able to review all of them.
City Clerk, Mr. City Attorney, is this, it's not clear? Okay.
Yeah, I think it got, that wasn't my intent. I meant, what I meant was, hey, if we're going to, if the council's just going to take over this responsibility for the time being instead of giving it to the planning commission, Dirk, I think you were asking for other options besides that. So I'm just trying to simplify things if we can.
I'll rescind my motion.
Okay, Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to restate the motion to say that the Rent Control Stabilization Board, the powers that be be thrown back at the council as needed instead of sending it to the planning commission for the time being, until there is interest enough to reformulate this, this committee or board. I think it's probably appropriate since we're making decisions, monetary decisions, one way or the other. So that's my motion.
Okay, so the motion is to have the city council act as the board?
Yes, sir. Since we don't meet, or they don't meet hardly, it sounds like the decision can come back as on staff level, as an agendized item whenever it's necessary.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
I'll go ahead and second it, and then we would automatically rescind this ordinance?
No, where, where the ordinance currently says planning commission, it's going to say city council.
Are you seconding it?
I did.
Okay. Any discussion? Councilmember Osborne.
So I see this as a stopgap measure, and at some point, I think we should reevaluate this and look at moving towards abolishing our ordinance and moving towards just having the state mandate in place because we're creating a burden for ourselves that has proven not to be needed since 2005. So I'll go ahead and support this, but I would like at some point, staff to review what the state is and bring back a report to us about what other communities have moved towards in the modern era, given how long this has been on the books and how long we haven't had a need for the request. I mean, we're past 10 years that any request has been made for us to deal with this. So it may be an outdated ordinance and an outdated need, and we may be perceiving its need when the state mandate may be enough. So that would be my request, is at some point, we evaluate the full ordinance, and I'm just, I know I can make it as a staff request, but I wanted to have the discussion before we had the vote because I think we're just putting Band-Aids on something.
Okay, and my only comment is I will not be supporting it, not because I don't think something has to be done, I think it's just an indication of our inability to make a decision. So I wish we had been able to come, even though this is a decision, I don't say it's not, but it is a decision. I don't think it was the decision we, I would have been pleased with, so I will not be supporting it, but it looks like we have enough support for it anyway, so let's vote. And that passes 4-1. Okay, we're going to move on to item number five. Councilmember Mosby, you pulled this.
Primarily I had a question about item A9, and, and, my question is, because we'll be drawing up a new city manager contract, should we leave that space empty or if we, if we pass this, the way it's been added in here, are we going to be limiting ourselves to modification of a, of a new city manager contract? I guess that's my, my question. What, should we wait until the new contract comes in to add this verbiage? Are we going to be limited with the new city contract because of this verbiage?
You won't, you won't be limited because of this, because you can always change this, and if you have a contract that doesn't say this, you could change this. But the likelihood of having a, of hiring a quality, a quality city manager who wouldn't want to have language similar to this in their contract is probably not that great because for a city manager to be able to function, that's really needed. If you look at what's required, I'm not sure what it is you would want to do differently than that.
Well, my thing is just because it hasn't been in there, we're putting it in now, but we're drawing up a new city manager contract in the near future, and I'm just saying, you know, we're, we're putting it in here, are we going to be changing it in another three or four months?
The reason, my recollection, the reason it's in here is because there was some pull and tug on what the city managers' obligations were and what the city council's obligations were with regard to the city manager, and my recollection is, when we brought that to you, the city council said, put it in the handbook, so that we're sure.
All right, no problem, I'm just wondering why we're doing it now because of then. All right, there's no more discussion, I'm making a motion to, well.
Okay, did you have a comment?
I have a couple of comments.
Okay.
Given some decisions we made this evening, there's some changes that probably need to be made. One is the mayor pro tem is indicated as Councilmember Mosby, and as of tonight, that change has been made. So if we're going to update it, the proper mayor pro tem for the current coming year should probably be added. Secondly, in A15, we mention all of the additional boards that we sit on currently. We also have a seat on the C3H Policy Board, that's not mentioned. Now granted, that could probably be done later because C3H is transitioning into home for good, and so that would be a different name, so we don't need to do that right away, but it should be of note in case that comes through to bring it back forward to us. Under A32, we talk about the equipment that's available. Nowhere in it does it discuss city-issued cell phones or laptops, and I think it would be important to make those notes. A3.3 mentions publishing home address, phone, and email, but due to the recent mandate by the California Supreme Court regarding access to email and phone numbers, I think it would be wise to state that we publish city phone and city email addresses rather than personal.
Ms. Osborne, sorry, on that one?
Yeah.
It says, most councilmembers do.
Okay.
It doesn't say the city does.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. To the city attorney, on A6, there is a discussion about vacancies regarding moving outside the city limits, and as of tonight, we had our second reading for district elections, and if you move outside of your district, you need to vacate. So I think it's important to mention that in the new policy as well. And then there is a discrepancy in a sentence in the final paragraph that talks about automatically being eligible to fill any such vacancy by appointment, and it seems unclear, that, that one sentence is unclear to me. So I'm not sure if, if you have a better explanation as to what that statement is trying to say. I could.
Which? I think she's still on A6.
It's the second paragraph, second paragraph of A6, the last sentence.
Yeah. See if I can get there really quick.
What that, what that was intended to mean, and it may be a little confusing now because of the district issue, but that was if, if someone was in a term that was shorter than the term that became vacant, the shorter-termed council member could be appointed to the longer-term vacancy, and then the election would happen for the shorter term. So that, that's functionally what that was for.
Okay.
It may need to be clarified because obviously, a council member in one district can't be appointed to the other district.
Right, that's where the clarity issue was for me when I, when I read it, as a result of moving towards district elections.
And those points that you've made, if the council is, if I have, if I, we have a, the motion be that those amendments are included, then we can just make those amendments, we don't have to bring it back to you. We can bring, make those amendments.
Okay. And that is it for now.
Okay, so I don't know, Councilmember Mosby, had you made a motion to, okay, so we need a motion then. Oh, yeah, we need public comments, thank you. Public comment? Seeing no rise, we're going to close public comment, and entertain a motion.
I move to accept the policy handbook updates with all of the current statements made by myself and Mr. Mosby.
Councilmember Mosby?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0.
Just for clarity, because you said what Councilmember Mosby said, at first he was wanting to remove language, but then I think after my discussion, he didn't want to remove it, so we're not removing that.
Okay, your last opportunity for oral communication, two minutes.
Nick Gonzalez, resident. Just kind of retouching on the Venter's sponsorship. I know several years back, many people that were involved with youth sports wanted to try to establish that the sports were an economic boost, and so one of the things that was done, a bit not scientifically, but we did go out and try to do a concerted effort to, to get data. During one of the major soccer tournaments, several of us went out, and what we did is those managers at the grocery store, owner of a gas station, we had several people that we knew who owned businesses. They wouldn't share their hard data, but they would give us percentages. In some instances, for instance, one of the delis at the grocery store had double of sales. Hotels were above average in vacancy. So there is somewhat of a money multiplier. I do very much respect equitable treatment, and so it's one of those areas where you get caught, and I understand that, but there is a potential to have some economic boost and an economic money multiplier impact, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Two minutes? Two minutes?
Lighten the mood, I know everybody's trying to go home. I've been gone from Lompoc for 12 years. My whole family relocated when my grandma had moved away, and she actually passed away two years ago, and to hear that you guys are trying to revitalize Lompoc, it means a lot to me that you guys are trying to do something. From a business standpoint, from a residential standpoint, from seeing that you guys got new hospitals, cop cars are up to date, every way that I can look at it, every aspect, it means a lot to me to move back to a city that I love, and I'm going to be coming to every single one of these that I could actually make it to. But, yeah, and to formally introduce myself, my name's Robert Echeverria. It was nice to hear from every single one of the council members. I've never been to a city meeting in my life, and I'm probably going to be to a lot more, to be honest with you guys, so it means a lot to me to be here and see all you guys, and I'll let you guys get home to your lovely families and get some grub, all right?
Welcome back. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close oral communication, bring back the council. Council requests, comments, and reports. Councilmember Vega.
Nothing to report, but you know what, I'd like to tee off on a public comment that was earlier, and I'd like to thank Patrick Wyomeller personally for his service. I know that every time that I have approached him, on a, on a business level, behind the scenes, not what you always, always see, you know, in public, he's always been cordial and been approachable to me and has been more than respectful. So people do get the wrong impression sometimes, you know, in the stress of the moment, and being that we're actually just trying to do our job as being good fiscal representatives for the city of Lompoc, which I believe Patrick is also doing with, and we just have a different way, we see different people. Sometimes we see some of the hardships that sometimes are, are behind the scenes, and that's the reason we ask the hard questions, not that we don't want the city to improve, absolutely, we want recreation, we want music. You know, I've, I've asked time and time again to myself, I said, why don't we have an event center, why don't we have music, why don't we have something that would inspire the kids so that they're not going off the edge of the earth here? Have housing, have businesses that can be successful. So I'd like to say thank you, Patrick, okay? And I hope to still maintain a relationship where, you know, I still value your advice, and I think that probably if I ever have any, I need any advice out there, I'd like to do an outreach regardless of you moving to the next city. Thank you.
Councilmember Mosby.
For those of you councilmembers and the public weren't aware, the utility commission passed out a, you have, you may have a water leak card, which is kind of cool because it's, lets people know. I know a lot of people have been very anxious for this, and they have the ability out there, and there's more information on the city website, citioflompoc.com/leaks. And been wanting to put it out there for a little while, but they wanted to baby step and to see how many phone calls we were getting, but it's a, it's a positive item that's going out there. Another item that I wanted to bring, we do have our adopted budget book, but I believe there, there might be an error in there on the item that I'd recognized back in August on the, the solid waste number. I don't know if that's still the case, Mr. Wilkie, is, we talked earlier, or is that?
We figured out roughly the number, and instead of what's in the book, we'll have, we'll change out those pages, and the number for the net revenues for solid waste is going to be about a positive $500,000, roughly.
Okay, so from a negative $600,000 to a positive 500, so something in the adopted book. And that brings up the last item that we had, last meeting, I think we jumped to conclusion on an item, and I wanted to bring out that I followed up on it, and that was the item with respect to an MOU with motorsports. And in going back over and looking and pulling the staff report from November 19th, 2013, and I, I understand that we got to a movement that we kind of took number one and number two, which was you terminated and then you move forward to developing a new MOU. But I think when we make decisions, it's important to have more things in front of us, and more of the items in front of us. And it was a single page printed on both sides that we had, but I think. And it was a single page printed on both sides that we had, but I think we we should have had the staff report. We were talking about the MOU, we should have the staff report, and we should have had the MOU in front of us. And as well, it was referencing emails. And I think we should have had the emails in front of us too so that we could come to a conclusion that we did. And basically what I was getting at in the staff report is it said, once phase one is underway and preliminary meetings have been held to refine the design of the project, staff would return with an amendment to the MOU to provide more accurate representation of timelines and to present possible changes to the project design resulting from the environmental review process. And I think if we had seen that, we would understand that we were supposed to be going and moving forward towards an amendment and not a termination and a new MOU. Now, there's two items of importance, I feel, here is when you're working with a nonprofit and you're doing volunteers, the word terminate is devastating. And we we did move forward with that terminate and and then develop a new MOU. And granted, there was a significant amount of changes that were to be done with the current MOU to come bring it up to speed. But we did and and was pushed through in the staff report, again, that it said we would amend the MOU. So there's two reasons I'm going to ask for reconsideration of the vote. One is I don't believe we had enough information in front of us. And if we want to bring it back and have all the information in front of us, and we come to the same conclusion, fine. But I believe that we we jumped too fast with a very short report, and I believe we didn't have all the information when we made our vote on this the last time. And not necessarily asking you to change your mind on on what the conclusion was, I just think that all the information be in front of us before we make a vote. So in that, I'm asking for two other people to come.
Mr. Penone, do we need a super majority on this or just a majority?
You would just need you would just need a majority, but may I say something?
Sure.
Based on the action you took, a notice of termination went out, and that's a 15 day notice, and I don't remember exactly when it went out. It was a week after or a few days after the last meeting, which was the seventh, no, the fifth. And so the 15 days is going to run before. If you do bring it back to you, the 15 days is going to run before, and that means it's going to be terminated. And we actually have a check that's been cut to be issued once the termination is effective because we still owe the foundation money. So if you want to do this, my recommendation to you would be have a special meeting so that you can, if you decide that you want to undo your previous action, you can do it before it's terminated.
Are you still looking for a a second and a third?
No, I'd need a second and a third on that before I even try to advance to having a special meeting. So if I can't get a second and a third on this, then there's no need in in going to the next level for a special meeting. They would reconsider the vote of the agendized item. I don't remember what number it was, but the the review of possible ash action regarding the motorsports park MOU from the December 5, 2017 meeting.
What was the date on that staff report?
December 5, 2017. This were you had recommendations, staff recommend, city council, number one, terminate, et cetera, et cetera. Or number two, instruct staff to negotiate an amendment to the MOU.
Which one are you referring to? The what was the date on the the other?
The other one was the staff report from November 19, 2013, that said, once phase one is underway, that we move forward with amending the MOU.
As another point of information, thinking this through, you're going to have to have the special meeting in the next few days because no one's going to be here the next week. No staff, I mean, you you close City Hall the next week. So if you're going to do this, you need to have that special meeting be in. Couldn't have it be tomorrow because you have to give 24 hours notice. So you could give notice tomorrow for Thursday or Friday.
Okay, well, let's see if he gets a second and a third. Okay, I do not see.
I just I'm kind of confused here because I understand what Councilmember Mosby is trying to do. The.
I have two points of concern, if I may. One is that I believe that if we're going to make decisions, that we shouldn't be making decisions on one page staff reports. And whether you go, it's a matter of procedural aspect, there's one. And the second one is that I think if the council had seen what was in here, we might have made a different decision. So.
Would this be something? I'll go ahead and pose this to you, Joe, that when we meet in January, we could have both of those staff reports and we could go through this at that point?
You could. However, because of the previous direction, we gave the 15 day notice, and that's going to that 15 day notice is going to terminate or end, the 15 day notice is going to run long before that, which will mean the MOU has been terminated. And we had planned, because we're closed next week, we had planned on January 2nd sending the check out, although the check is probably due before that because it's terminated, but no one's going to be here to be able to issue it, so.
But part of the other motion was to renegotiate the MOU.
What was what was directed and what the notice includes is that before before the staff sits down with the foundation, they need to propose their plan on a non, a plan that doesn't cause any relocation or displacement of the skydive.
Is that what the 19 November 2013 staff report has in it? That's what Councilmember Mosby is referring to.
You know, if I if I can make clarification for the moment only because of what was brought up, and I don't know, maybe this is just going to add to the, maybe it won't clarify anything. One aspect I want to clarify because the statement was made about, well, if council had known, I'd say, yeah, if if I had known, it might have been different as well. I was the author of the December 5 staff report. I just want to make sure it wasn't that anything was withheld, that that information was known was withheld. So some somebody apparently has the information, is after the fact brought it to you. If you didn't have the knowledge on December 5, I didn't have the knowledge on December 5. The November 13, 2013 preceded my my tenure here at the city. So I didn't know about any staff report or any discussion I may have gone on. I operated off of the MOU and what the parameters of the MOU. I operated off what what city council's latest direction had been that called for the foundation to deliver certain information. And if not, then we came back to you with that action. So I just wanted to be be clear that this wasn't a matter of of our our staff veiling any information from council. We worked off of, we're working off of council's direction.
And, Mr. City Manager, I'm not insinuating that you're withholding anything intentionally. I'm just saying that a little bit deeper, not necessarily behalf, I know this is a long way out, four years ago on this and stuff too, but I just in digging through and coming up, that's all.
Yeah, I didn't mean to sound defensive, but I just wanted to recap what the steps were that brought us over the last couple of weeks.
Since I do not see a second and a third, the motion fails. Okay, anything else, Councilmember Mosby?
Merry Christmas, and Mr. City Manager, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Councilmember Starbuck.
Well, nothing to really report. I'd like to mention that there's going to be a snow day Friday, 2 o'clock in the afternoon. Santa's going to show up, and I understand there's going to be in excess of 40 tons of snow. I hope you show up, Patrick, because I'm going to hit you with snowballs.
I don't think you want me to take that challenge. I just may.
You're from Fresno.
It's really hot there.
Councilmember Osborne.
I attended a C 3 H meeting, and as I stated earlier, the board has moved to move forward in transitioning to the structure that is in partnership with United Way called Home for Good. The board will expand to become a funder's collaboration, inviting several nonprofit partners within the community to help tackle the homeless issue. And as soon as that information is ready, representatives from the United Way and Home for Good will make a request to appear before us. So I just wanted to give staff a heads up for that. That should be end of January sometime. Secondly, thank you, Patrick, for all your hard work. You will be missed, and I absolutely believe that we will take care of your colleagues. Our staff is very talented, and I I do not want to see any of them following you out the door, so count me in taking care of them. I want to wish our community a very happy holiday. Thank all of the city staff for all of the hard work that they do and for the sacrifices that they're making to bring our budget back in line. And enjoy the time off, enjoy your families, and come back with the new year ready to go. Thank you.
Okay, and on December 6, I attended a Prop 64 symposium in, where was that? Kalinga?
Kalinga, yes.
Kalinga.
I was there with you. Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Osborne and Assistant City Manager Teresa Osborne.
Teresa Osborne?
Teresa Galavan, yeah. City did pay our registration. I drove the vehicle, we car pooled, and I was reimbursed for a mileage. On the 7th, I attended a luncheon for disabled vets at the Veterans Memorial Center. On the 8th, I attended a executive committee meeting for Northern California Power in Roseville. The city did pay one night's hotel room for me and mileage, I drove my own vehicle. And on the 15th, I attended the funeral of our former fire chief, Linial White. Let's see, and then on the 17th, I guess that was yesterday or the day before, I attended a community get together for an appreciation, a base appreciation for the community members at the base. It was a little social get together. The last thing is, as you all know, the Lompoc Redevelopment Agency was dissolved in February of 2012, pursuant AB 126. That legislation also established the process for widening, winding down each of the former agency's finances. And one step was to form oversight boards. We have formed an oversight board, and it has five members from out the throughout the community, the different recipients. For instance, the hospital district has a board member, the school district has a board member, Santa Barbara County has board members, and the city has a board member. So Mr. Wine-Miller was our representative on the oversight board. With his departure, I am going to be recommending in the nomination of Teresa Galavan to the oversight board. And that, well, it's actually an appointment. The mayor, it's not recommending it, so the mayor does make that appointment. So I'll be making that appointment to of Ms. Galavan to the oversight board. And we have a meeting coming up sometime in the next couple of weeks, and I'm assuming you'll be attending that meeting then, so. With that.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'd be remiss if I didn't say something, and I apologize for not saying it earlier. I've been doing this for almost 38 years, municipal law, and without any hesitation, I have not worked with a a better professional colleague than your city manager, and I will miss him and his ability to serve the city.
And I think we all echo that. Patrick, we are going to miss you. And again, like I said earlier, we wish you the best. We're glad you're staying in our city. And as I offered the other day, we've got some board members or little committee boards that you could apply for. Come back and pester us. Okay, with that being said, with no other business, I will adjourn this meeting to a regular city council meeting of January 16 of 2018. Good night.
Amen.[1703.33]